Good evening, I'm calling to order the Fairfax Special Council Meeting, May 12th, 2022. May I have an approval, a motion to approve the agenda, affidavit of posting?
Mayor, I think we need a rule call first.
Oh, I think we do. Tamela, maybe a rule call, please.
I'm here.
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 President.
I'm here.
Thank you. And can I get a motion to approve the agenda affidavit of posting?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Any nays? Okay, that was unanimous vote on the approval of the agenda and affidavit of posting. Councilmember Ackerman, would you please read the land acknowledgement?
Yes.
Thank you.
Fairfax Town Council acknowledges that we are located on the unceded ancestral lands of the Coast Mewoc people of present day Marin County. We honor with gratitude the land itself and all of its ancestors, past, present, and emerging.
Thank you. As far as meeting protocol, the mayor shall maintain order at the meeting. The council and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language or ridiculing the character or motives of council members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. Please turn off all cell phones or place in silent mode. We will review the agenda at 10:00 PM, although we have a pretty short agenda, so there won't really be opportunity to continue anything. So the rest of that clause is moot. I think we're ready for the presentation. Item one, Housing Element Status and Timeline Update, including Opportunity Sites, SEQA, Objective Development and Design Standards, Eco Village Concepts. And I believe we have EMC via Zoom, our housing consultant, consultant Andy Flower, and our town attorney Janet Colson. You'll be presenting this evening?
You need to press your button, so for the recording.
Yes, Andy will be doing the presentation. Is he on? Okay.
Hi, Andy. I think you need to unmute. Yeah, there you go.
Mayor Helman. Counsel.
Welcome.
Thank you. I like your background. I'm glad to see everybody all together like that. Wish I could be there with you. Shall I begin my presentation?
Yes, please do.
Wonderful. I'm just noticing our date is a little off there. Today's the 12th, not the 10th. But for the town of Fairfax, today we'll be talking about status and timeline for the housing element update. Excuse me. Our agenda tonight, we'll be talking a little bit, touching briefly on opportunity sites, the SEQA review preparation, objective development and design standards, and the Eco Village concept. So we're going to begin with the housing overview like we do with all of these meetings, because we want to make sure to be inclusive for anyone who is new to this process, so that there's context for what we're discussing. So what is a housing element? This is a plan for housing needed in a community, and the town of Fairfax does not build the housing. Instead, we create the programs and policies to plan where new housing should go and how many units should be on potential sites. This is required by state law. This is one chapter of the entire general plan. And this particular chapter gets updated every eight years. This is the sixth cycle, and our timeline will begin June of this year and last through 2031. The number that we are working with, that has been targeted for Fairfax, has been, it's part of the regional housing needs allocation. It's assigned by the state and then allocated through regional government, ABAC, or Association of Bay Area Governments. Just as a refresher, the number of units for entire town of Fairfax is 490, and it gets divided up between, among the different affordability levels for housing, with 149 units for the very low income, 86 for low income, 71 moderate, and 184 above moderate income. And we show here that in comparison with the numbers of units that are allocated throughout Marin County. This may look familiar. We are sort of in this same position we were at before. We've made our SEQA decision. We are moving forward with an EIR. And we are in the background drafting up the, all of the different elements, excuse me, all of the different chapters for the housing element. So we're continuing to work hard at that, and we have also evolved the sites. And tonight won't be a night where we go deep in looking at the sites, but I do want to give an overview as sort of a sneak preview for what council will be discussing in depth in early June. I believe it's June 6th. We also want the public to understand that not only are there opportunities right now to continue to comment on the sites that have been chosen, but there also is a mandatory 30-day public draft review before it goes to the first cycle of review with HCD. We're hoping for that to happen this summer. And beyond that 30-day review, we have 10 days to incorporate all the comments that we hear from the public. And then the state or HCD has then 90 days to review the draft and report its written findings. When we give it back to them after council adoption, they will then have 60 days for that subsequent draft amendment or adoption. So diving in, we'll be talking just a little bit here about the housing site inventory. It has evolved. It has changed a little bit since we saw you last in February. And that's, first we'll talk about what a site inventory is. So the purpose is to identify specific sites that are available and reasonable. And this is a word that's brought to us by the state, and we are expected to provide demonstrable evidence that the sites we select are, in fact, reasonable considerations for development within this eight-year cycle for at least 490 housing unit opportunities. So we recognize that rezoning and looking to programs and policy will likely be necessary. So that's what we'll be working with everybody in the community in these next couple of months to work all of this out. So we had our list of sites. We brought it to First Planning Commission and then council, and those were received. And while we've had online a form available for any property owner, and it continues to be available for any property owner who has an intention to join this effort and consider their site, have us consider their site to be on this list. So we've taken those things into consideration. In Fairfax, we don't really have pipeline projects. That would be if we had a project that maybe had entitlements but not yet having the building permits. But here's what I was talking about, property owner interest. This goes a long way. This is the first cycle where HCD, the state, is really looking hard at this reasonable factor about a site being included on a list. So we've taken it seriously when people have responded to the letter that we've sent out, asking them, please fill out this form if you want to join this list, if you want your property to be considered and debated and possibly rezoned. Maybe objective development and design standards will be applied to it. We also have reduced some sites. Some of the sites that we had early on, we've now recognized that maybe the property size, because we haven't been able to balance it with property owner interest. If it's less than a half acre, then HCD requires extra due diligence for rising to that reasonable factor for the possibility of being developed in this next eight years. And we'll soon be also considering any kind of environmental constraint as we go forward with our EIR, Environmental Impact State. SB 9 projects, if there are any inclinations for folks to pursue those, the only way that we can count those in our sites or count these towards the 490 is if a property owner fills out a property owner interest form, and that initiates our discussion with you. All of the questions that we're asking are directly related to what we know that HCD is looking for. And in fact, it's the kind of demonstrable evidence that they need in order for our list to include any SB 9 projects. ADUs were locked in to the formula that they share with us. So the number that we use for that going forward is connected with that. So this was the site list that we brought to February. I just thought I would remind everybody. And we have this average number of units desired by the public. And this came right out of our balancing act, that mapping program that we had a workshop on. We had robust interaction. We had, we're realizing now and working with our other communities how wonderfully interactive the community here in Fairfax is, and how engaged you are and how willing you are to share with us your comments and your opinions about the site, about each of the sites. And so then, as we discussed with council, we then recognized, of course, on that day, that St. Rita's Church that needs to go away as a considered viable option. And Jolly Hill, that was another decision made by council that that site would no longer be considered moving forward. And you'll see here, we have two other columns, one of them initial project, and the other one, initial alternative. This is in preparation for our environmental review, and it's also just sort of a realistic perspective of how we might move forward here. Whether or not we can use the Town and Country site is the biggest factor in how much capacity will be necessary for all of the other sites. And we'll talk about that more, a lot more, in June. I wanted to introduce you briefly to a couple of the sites that we're now considering for further discussion and for further deliberation in early June. We have the Manor Elementary School, Ross Valley. We've heard from that school district that they're at least willing to have discussion about this. So this isn't a definite on our list yet, but it's a maybe. And we already have a meeting time to discuss it further with that property owner. We also have various properties here that we are now incorporating in with our list, and this was a direct result of property owner interest. Another property owner interest site is this very large and very strangely configured site. This is about 50 acres, and there are access points to the site in three major areas. One in the north here, and one in the middle, and then, of course, along Sir Francis Drake. So there's varying constraints and opportunities for the site, and we'll be talking about that more.
Having trouble orientating ourselves to that map, I can just tell from the body language of my colleagues.
Oh, good. Thank you for letting me know that.
So that blue, that blue region, could you just point out where?
Yes. I think if I tell you that this purple region right here is Victory Village, that might give good context.
Okay, so the accent, okay.
Yeah. And so this line right here, this blue line, is also that county line, the way that the county comes and touches in on Sir Francis Drake, right? Where the, there's some commercial area right at this intersection.
So Andy, if I could ask a question about, so is the, where it touches with Sir Francis Drake, is that the Jehovah's Witness parcel, and then it connects, or?
Oh, I think the Jehovah's Witness parcel is next door.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think that's the Kingdom Hall right there.
Correct.
If you can see my cursor. Okay.
So Andy, that 50-acre property you just mentioned, which is the weird one. Isn't that the one owned by Rob Schwartz?
Correct. That is correct. Yes, yes.
And then, could you tell us what the other two are, if there's a generic name for them, just so we can sort of orient ourselves? The one that's like sort of a triangle but not really, and the one, maybe it's like a little?
Oh, those are three separate?
No, that's one single parcel.
Oh, so that's all, so that's all that property?
Yes. David and I, David is on with us today, David Masonson from the LS. And Tamela, if you could please elevate him to panelist as well, that would be great. He'll be joining us later on in the show. But this, yes, very oddly configured, single parcel. So there's potentially opportunities in several different portions of this site. We know that there's owner interest in the possibility of being developed along the street. We do have some concerns about visible sloughing and would want a geotech to be involved in pursuing that any further. There also is driveway access directly to a main street here. So, and we know that there is some slope, but this could be an opportunity for tiny homes. And we've certainly heard from the planning commission that there's a strong desire for that kind of possibility, and potentially there could be an Eco Village. So we'll be discussing it much more in depth at the June meeting, June 6th. Another site is, is the site just behind Victory Village? And this, it would only be this area that is in red, most likely, because this is the most promising sort of building area for these two lots. These two lots are zoned, single family, and conceivably, they could, you know, potentially have maybe four units on each. It's not recommended that we go much more than that unless that's something that council would like us to pursue further. So in total, the purple sites are the ones that are on our list, and on our next slide, we have the list. So Kingdom Hall, we have not heard from that property owner that there is an interest for housing, and particularly for faith-based properties. If there's not that impetus coming from the owners, then it's especially hard to convince HCD that there would be any reasonableness to expect that development would occur.
Andy, I'm sorry to interrupt. It's Renee. I just had a question. On the slide that was original, opportunity sites. White Hill Middle School was up top, and it was 50, and it was, it had a line through it. I wasn't sure what that meant.
Thank you for that question. Yes, so we've brought White Hill School back as a possibility. There is a much higher bar, and we'll talk about that, just, we'll just touch on it here, but we'll have a much deeper conversation. I wanted to give a sneak preview of what we'll be doing a deeper dive for on June 6th. So because it's such a high bar for the, for the state to acknowledge and accept the reasonableness for development of a school property, it's, it's maybe, it's maybe a little unlikely that we can take, take the opportunity all the way through to a, for instance, a design submission or a, the time period that we have before the due date for the housing element update is maybe a shorter period of time than what would be thought reasonable for a school to actually become a reasonable site in the eyes of the state. So the Oak Manor School, the White Hill School, the portions of the property, and I want to be very clear about that. There's no intention to take these sites and entirely redevelop them as housing. They may end up being, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I just want to dig a tiny bit deeper. Tell me if this is not the appropriate time, but I'm just looking at Oak Manor, and I know that site, looking at 20, and then White Hill, and I know that site, looking at 20. I'm wondering if the school district was providing feedback that made you think this, or is this your experience with HCD and generally with school sites?
This is, this is our anticipated guess, judging by the amount of developable space on these sites. For here, for this list, we have the project and we have the alternative. So this is not yet something that has been discussed with the school, but we do have a meeting on the books to meet with the school.
So Andy, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I don't know if I'm going to remember what's on these lists.
Sure.
So when we talked about O'Donnell's Nursery the last time, I think it was January or something like that, I had mentioned that Mr. O'Donnell had told me several years ago that the property to the west, the hill.
Yes.
He had contemplated bringing tiny homes or something like that, or cabins. And I know you guys were going to look into that possibility, and maybe he just didn't get back to you, so that's why it's still at the 20 or whatever you have there. Is that, is that, but now it's 20. Since the revised alternative is now 20, is that, is my guesstimate right that at this point, that's still fairly uncertain?
Let's see.
It's okay if you don't know. It's just maybe something we can talk about offline.
Certainly. And well, and we'll be folding that into the June 6th meeting. But if I may just get through my presentation, maybe before there's more questions, I would appreciate that, in part because I have some follow-up slides here that answer some of the questions that are being asked. So the difference between the project and the alternative, again, here is whether or not Town and Country would be used as a site. When Town and Country is used as a site, it puts a lot less pressure on the other sites. So if we anticipate, for instance, for the O'Donnell Nursery site, and right now we are anticipating that it would be all three lots that we would contemplate for objective development, design standards, and the possibility of a zoning change, and whether that current property owner would have an interest in developing it or selling it, and that a developer would want to then build. It doesn't mean that they can't exceed these numbers. Because we have a requirement for no net loss, it is in our best interest if we enable more development so that in the end, we can meet the RENA during the eight-year cycle. And that may sound a little too simplistic, and I will be sure to talk through that formula, way of thinking, on June 10th.
Andy, and this is Janet.
Yes.
It might be a good idea for me to remind everybody that the Town and Country site requires a vote of the people to rezone it, to change the zoning on it. So that's a ballot measure that has to happen before that can be real.
And just one note, Andy, I believe our next meeting in June is June 1st or June 2nd. So it's not as far away as what we think.
Okay, not, not.
June 1.
June 1, excuse me. Thank you for that correction. I appreciate it. Yes. And thank you, Janet, for the reminder about the Town and Country site. So this is an example of one of the school sites. And this is an example of the documentation that HCD is looking for in order for a site like this to be considered reasonable. So while we will be working with the school district, we will, it is not part of our scope to lead their design effort, but if they were to get to a place where they would make available, potentially at least an agreement, that their intention is to build on these sites, then that would at least open the door to discussion with HCD. But the further along they could get in their process, if this is their intention, the stronger possibility that we could count this as part of our RENA sites. And this is the Town and Country site. And again, as Janet Colson just mentioned, that this would have to go to a vote. And so that's why we want to make sure throughout our process to have two separate lists, one that might include this, and one that exhibits how we would meet the RENA number if Town and Country is not part of our list. So with that said, we are preparing for our EIR. We need this finalized site list in order for SEQA to be entirely kicked off, but they are working behind the scenes. And this is a list of the facets that they are putting together for their SEQA review, the California Environmental Quality Act review. So they'll be looking at air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, greenhouse gases, hydrology and water quality, noise, public services, transportation, utilities, and wildfire. It is important to note that HCD is particularly respectful of the very high fire hazard zones. But in the town of Fairfax, we're working with high fire risk areas. And so it does not preclude us from considering these areas for potential housing units. We are incorporating evacuation route concerns and questions, and also traffic concerns and water availability. And there's also opportunities for people to continue to let us know what their, what their concerns are, and for that to be incorporated in with our SEQA process. So right now, these are our four alternatives that our SEQA process will be pursuing. We have the project, which is the RENA number plus 20% buffer. I think you saw that number, 588. We have the required alternative one, which would be no project. Alternative two, RENA, 490 units with no buffer, and that's just as a comparison with the project. It will then discuss our goals and whether or not alternative two meets the goals, which would be to have a certified housing element. Alternative three would be the consideration of rezoning Town and Country. And I apologize, it's talking about rezoning town sites. That was an earlier contemplation, but that got reconsidered so that alternative three would just be to add Town and Country as capable of having legal housing units, up to 200 units. And alternative four would be between 200 and 400 units. Oops. So as I mentioned, we are welcoming public comments throughout our SEQA process. There will also be a scoping meeting. It may or may not coincide with the June 1st, next council meeting. But we have a place on our website where everybody can share anonymously your questions for SEQA. Also, any questions, comments, or ideas that you have for the housing element update process. So Objective Development and Design Standards Toolkit. And this is where David Masonson from the LS is welcome to chime in. Thank you for being here tonight, David.
Of course. Enjoy joining you.
So we know that the town of Fairfax has been engaged with Marin County, and they're So we, we know that uh, the town of Fairfax has been engaged with Marin County and their collective process and uh, establishing this toolkit. Um, Opticos was hired to develop a kit of parts intended to be tailored to Fairfax specifically. These are some images that are within the um, the document that um that are fo- fo- focused for um the missing middle. And um, and this is a note that's expressly written on the front page of the uh, of the toolkit. And it's that it was intended to be tailored um, as a follow on to the process. In other words, by no means was there an expectation that the three hundred plus page document would be adopted and then um, implemented as is. In fact, we would, we would perceive that as an impediment or a constraint, and we would um, include that in with our reporting of um of what it is to uh, consider development in the town of Fairfax. David, is there anything you'd like to say in addition?
Uh, no, just that I think, you know, the development of the uh, design standards is appropriate to do with the housing element because they do kind of work in tandem in terms of trying to reduce the overall uh, barriers to uh, producing development. And I think they're important for uh, for cities to adopt some version of design standards so they don't get into trouble down the line um, with SB thirty five or people that come forth with SB nine with a, which essentially remove the city's ability to do discretionary review. So they, basically the design standards are the, the stopgap um, for cities that uh, developers will need to uh, comply with uh, when they come to the city with an SB nine site or when they do something that is compliant to SB thirty five.
And I believe. The only kind of, oh, go ahead.
Uh, just a quick question. David, um, was Opticos who worked with um, you, you worked with Marin County or are you going to work with EMC to work on um, tailoring the, the Fairfax odds?
I will work with EMC. Uh, we did not work with uh, Opticos uh, producing this document. Um, I think the production of this document was really wise because it's a huge effort at three hundred and sixty pages, but certainly every city needs to tailor it to their own needs.
Okay, I I I get it. I was unclear. Thanks.
For the clarifying question. So David, I I hear you saying that this is, this is really the way that the town can protect themselves going forward for whatever kinds of uh, regulatory measures may come down from the state. If the, if the town has these measures in place and it's reflective of the town goals and um, desires for the future built environment, then um, then this will remain, even if discretionary power is, is taken away.
That, that's correct. And if you don't have something like this, it's on, you know, there's really no, there's no stopgap um, for a developer just getting approval for complying with uh, you know, what doesn't exist. Uh, you know, I think that the design standards that, that have been created, there is certainly plenty of parts here that will be applicable to Fairfax. Uh, it's just, it's more than you will need, but it provides form based code that is completely objective. It allows any owner or developer to read it and to clearly understand what would be possible on their property to develop, which is really the goal that HCD wants uh, wants the housing element to meet.
In the end, it would be user friendly, not only to the property owner or developer, but also to staff.
Yeah, absolutely. I think it'll take the load off the city's staff in terms of what's necessary to, to handle, and I think it will simplify the approvals process and I mean, I think it's HC's, HCD's goal that, you know, a, a property owner that's not a developer uh, doesn't need to necessarily hire a land use attorney to parse the code.
And and this is necessary, this is beneficial to the town for many reasons, right? Like um, we know that the new laws prioritize land use over zoning, meaning that the land use chapter, as it gets amended uh, in tandem with the housing element, that um it's, it's not about waiting for that subsequent zoning. There's now state laws that uh, enable um, property owners to develop according to the land use designation, right?
Right. And so when the land use moves forward, if there aren't the design standards that come with it, then there, you know, first of all, will not be clear on development. And then second of all, someone comes in with a project that complies to one of those uh, SBs, uh, there really will be no protections for the city in terms of controlling what the built form ends up being.
And by going through this process now, at the same time that we're talking about potential changes to zoning and land use and um that we're going to have the graphics to help, help the town um, decision makers to make, to make clear decisions, to make decisions that are rooted in uh, ways that everybody can help visualize the future of the built environment together.
Well, I think, you know, I think that's the key is that these are all kind of the same types of ideas. I mean, when we look at the housing element, it's all about how, how do particular sites affect the community? And when you look at the design standards, it's about how the buildings on those sites are built, which also affects how the community perceives them. Because there are great ways that you can minimize the appearance of larger projects, uh, and there's ways that, you know, larger projects will look too large. Uh, so I think they do work hand in hand uh, as one unit.
And and also, if if we do this now, then we're not leaving the town with um a, a certified housing element that then has all these follow up implemented or implementation requirements um, with their own deadlines by the state so that everybody's not going to have to look to these same sites again next year to discuss the uh, objective development, design standards and zoning. Instead, we can package it and have all these discussions at the same time. So we can save the town time and money, and we can have concerted conversations that are um that are graphically oriented so that everybody can understand what is being discussed.
Absolutely.
We've also heard a lot about um, an eco village concept, and that certainly bubbled up through the planning commission and um and it's this idea that if, if we're, if we're going to take these community goods, these large parcels in, in, within town, if, if there's going to be contemplation about the possibility that they would now be developed in some new way, why not have that new way be reflective of the, the goals and this um the standards that uh, the values that the town of Fairfax hold dear? And so um, so we're bringing on uh, schemata to talk about and help us visualize for these larger sites what it will take to have a successful eco village in sites that where, where that can make sense. And we're talking about Town and Country primarily, but possibly also this fifty acre site. So we're bringing Grace Kim in, and she's going to be doing a lot of um, precedent research. Lots of presidential experience. And she's had experience not only helping to write code, but also actually constructing and living in um, co-housing. So being able to have an ordinance that um, that reflects the values of, of the town of Fairfax while also improving conservation so that there would be things like gray water requirements, um, energy, uh maybe even net zero. It would be about uh, incorporating those kinds of performance based standards in a way that we can be certain, because we're, we're working with an expert who can support us with this ordinance so that, so that it can result in a um a built environment at Town and Country site essentially, and and maybe at some of these other sites. And along the way, Grace Kim will also be bringing us graphic demonstrations of the options. Timeline. So here we are. That is the date. There's June first. Um So we'll be working on the draft sites inventory and have that ready for you to um, to review. We, that, that I'll be honest, we, we have since um, putting this together, heard from the county, we were hoping to receive our um, AFFH review for our sites sooner than this, but unfortunately, we won't be receiving it until May thirty first. Um And we do want to incorporate that with what we bring forward to council. So there may be a slight change in these dates, and we'll be working together with uh, Janet Coulson and um, Heather Abrams to determine the best way to, to roll this out in a way that respects everybody's time and energy. But we are also working hard in the background for uh our um both um, quantitative and qualitative AFFH data and experience. So um we should have that uh, by the end of July, beginning of, or excuse me, by um, mid-July uh and that will include a report that's very user friendly, reader friendly, and we will be incorporating that with each and every part of our housing element chapter. Our goal is to get a draft off to HCD by the end of, by the end of the summer uh, so that we can make our dates as close as possible for the HCD uh, deadline.
Question on the timeline?
Yes, Mary.
Do you mind going back a slide?
Well, we are going to be talking a little more specifically about timeline here.
Oh, okay. I just had a question about the EIR, but if you're going to get to that, that's, that's great.
Well, the, the EIR gets kicked off uh, as soon as we have this sites list formalized. And uh, and so we're hoping at least by mid-June uh, for that to happen. Um, but as I mentioned, our EIR team has already initiated things so that um, we can make the most of, of the time that we have. The, the um, the EIR would be taking place throughout the HCD review. We typically need around nine months for the EIR, but um, as I mentioned, we're beginning with some aspects of it, so uh, that could probably be reduced to seven or maybe even six months. The goal is to have that EIR complete by December as much as humanly possible. And uh, i- it's unfortunate, but we do know that the HCD review does take a full ninety days. If, if we have our Sequoia draft prepared and ready for public consumption prior to um, that HCD review, then we'll continue on with that process. And um, and just just a reminder, our timelines are a collaboration um, in, in working with decision makers and we we will be bringing to you information and as timely a, a method as we possibly can. Given the multiple directions that we are receiving information that are essential to um for your decision making process and um and we just request that when we, when we bring documentation to you and um, ask for your guidance, that uh, that you just continue to help help us move along on this path as seamlessly as possible. And with that, um, we're open to uh, questions and answers.
I have a couple of questions, but I'll start with, I'll start with Councilwoman Ackerman. Do you have any questions? No, do you? Okay, go ahead.
Um, just one, uh, Andy, first of all, thank you and thanks to Dave. You mentioned the Town and Country Club and um you also mentioned before that the documentation that HCD requires to um think that something is reasonable to count towards your RENA. And so since I would assume that we can probably get the documentation that you had on that one slide, but since Town and Country requires a vote of the people, is that also something that HCD would question? When we, i- if and when, you know, we submit Town and Country for any number, uh, are they going to ask beyond those three things you had on that slide, do you think?
We'll be working closely with HCD and, and so with our draft, we may present the two pathways, the two options and um you know, whether we are able to use Town and Country site or not. And and that will also be um, an important decision for council to make going forward. Whether or not we would want to have, you know, possibly a, a secondary list on the ready in the event that a vote of the people were to be negative rather than positive.
So just a follow up question on that. I know that somewhere in the late nineties, somebody did run a ballot initiative which did fail. Were, were you contemplating something in your timeline, like trying to put something on the ballot before like November or something like that? I didn't see that on your timeline. I'm just questioning because it seems like that's a big question that we wouldn't really be able to answer until we did a vote of the people.
Right. We're working closely with your town attorney to um, to understand how we want to incorporate that, that part of the timeline. November is not the only time that a vote can occur. So there are alternatives.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, go ahead.
Um, yeah, thank you, both of you for um, for the presentation. I do have a couple of questions. I'm, I'm going to start with, um, you know, I'm, I'm looking at uh, Mr. Michael McIntosh, who's the owner of um Marin Town and Country. I'm just wanting to ensure that, that these conversations are taking place in conjunction with the owner of the property, correct?
We've certainly met with Mr. McIntosh. Yes, so we have some idea of, of what his intentions are for the site, and we've incorporated that as a possibility.
Okay, thank you. Um, another question is um, of the sites, the new sites that you're introducing today. How many of those are actually SB nine projects? A- as you said, they are homeowners that have expressed or filled out the interest form. Um, do you know how many of them would fall in the SB nine category?
I, I, I don't have that memorized, and I'm not looking at that list right at the moment, but I'll be sure to include that um, percentage or uh, number with our, with our next report to.
That would be, that would be great, because I think the public's very interested in knowing, you know, how, how will people avail themselves of the SB nine regulations. Um, the other question I have is, you know, and this is kind of a a macro scale question about the housing element itself and the RENA numbers by income levels. I, I still am wondering whether the public and even myself completely understands why the, why the majority of the housing units for Fairfax and for the county are in the above moderate um income level. And it just, it's been hard to have an explanation that really helps people understand that because it's, it does present a lot of the uh, pushback opportunity for people, for myself as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. I, I um, I understand that perspective. Um, and I think there's a different way to look at it. We um, basically, if, if you add together the very low, low um, and moderate income, those are all considered affordable housing. For instance, if um with inclusionary requirements, if a developer isn't, is required to um, maybe develop ten units as inclusionary units, typically five of them would need to be low and five of them would need to be moderate. So it's, it's, it's not that the above moderate is um So, so in other words, when you add up those three against the above moderate, it's um, it equals more. There are more affordable units on the list than uh, above moderate units on the list. It's that the affordable units are categorized in three different categories.
Okay, no, I appreciate the explanation. I'm not sure that it's a satisfying explanation for most people, including myself, but that's just because. Okay, no, I appreciate the explanation. I'm not sure that it's a satisfying explanation for most people, including myself, but that's just because we have a very high threshold for moderate, you know, housing. But thank you. I understand and I appreciate the answer.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Yes, I, I just had one clarification that came up during the presentation, Andy. It, I just wanted to like make sure it was abundantly clear to the public and to myself, the number that is above the 490, right, we're like actually looking at maximum capacity in, in the SEQA process for some of these sites. So the number that people are seeing all the way at the bottom is that, you know, 577 with the 20% buffer, right? Could you just explain one more time the rationale for ensuring that we have that buffer? Because I think people are already totally stunned by like the 490 number, but then to now see this second number that is even higher than the 490 number, just want to make sure it's, it's abundantly clear why that's being done. Thanks.
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Catrano. The buffer was something that I resisted at first as well. It's, it's easy to, to just have sticker shock and say, whoa, 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 there is enough already. But the more I began to understand how the buffer can actually be a friend to the town is, is that over time, within that eight-year cycle, let's say we just have five opportunity sites and, and maybe two of them get developed, but at, at a fewer housing unit number than we anticipated. Because we, we, we can, there's a lot we can do to try to guide development, but we can't be entirely prescriptive. So if that were the case, then during that mid-cycle review, HCD would then require complete, total new analysis. If, which would be akin to really doing a housing element update all over again. If those sites were to be developed in ways that that demonstrate that there is no longer capacity for the full number of units that were that were part of your housing element in the first place. So it's going to save the town time and money if we make sure that there's capacity. Now, it doesn't mean that there's an inevitability that this is the number that will get built. It just is an injection of flexibility. It enables that same number of units to be built in slightly different ways than being entirely prescriptive about what it has to look like, as, as far as numbers on each site. I hope that helps.
Yeah, so, so just to confirm, the, the, the target that we still have is the 490. But what you're saying is that there might be some sites in the inventory that we say this could be 50 and it ends up being 30. That's what the, whoever develops it wants to do is 30 units. And we can't say you have to do 50, but we still need to ensure that we can meet the target that we've been given. And so we need to have that flexibility to make up for that 20-unit deficit at, at some other parcel with, within that site inventory. Is that correct?
That's exactly correct. It's all about the capacity for. It's not the insistence that it get built, but it's the capacity for that, that number of units and, and, and going deeper, that number of affordable units. So it's, it's also geared toward the affordability levels. So if, if somebody were to build at that site and it were to be all above moderate, then, but maybe we had projected that at these sites, there would be some percentage of affordable, low income or very low income.
That's helpful. That's super helpful and clarifying and just one little follow-up. So if, if there was like a, if there were incentives or if there was like some sort of density bonus or something like that for parcels, because we have heard members of the public talk about those types of things, even though that's a little cart before the horse. I'm wondering, does that, like, if there are more units at a particular site with a density bonus or something, could that go above the amount that we have in this SEQA process? Or is it, is that like the maximum threshold you can have is the number of units that we have prescribed?
That's a great question. I, I feel like I was ready to answer it until you brought in SEQA. So just generally though, the, the funny thing about the density bonus is that we're not allowed to, to consider it when we're anticipating, for instance, affordability levels or even numbers of units at a site. So we can't project out, oh, there will be a 20% density bonus at this site, therefore, you know, we can stack our numbers in that way. But that, that does enable this flexibility. It, it, we, it's very difficult to, to, to get affordable units built. But of course, the town of Fairfax has, has shown that the impossible is true, is that you're capable of some very difficult. Victory Village is a, is a wonderful success and, and we'd love to encourage more opportunities like that. And we'll be discussing ways we might be able to do that when we talk about policies. So it's, it's, it's these three things going on at once. We want to think about a projected number of units. We want to make sure David's part of the conversation at all times and, and, and also Grace Kim, so that we can talk about, but what will it look like? What is the town willing to accept? And, and where's the bar? What do we not want to allow? We want to incorporate all of that in our discussions as we go forward. And then and then if, if somebody's able to do a density bonus, well, then that takes less pressure off of another site.
Thank you. That is super clarifying. That's, those are all my questions, Mayor.
Thank you. Andy, if you wouldn't mind putting the slide up for the timeline, I need to just have this cemented in my mind a little bit better and drill into it a little bit more if, if you don't mind pulling that up. And, and while you're doing that, David, I do have a question for you. Have you visited and spent time in the town of Fairfax?
I have.
Okay, great. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, absolutely.
Given your role.
I live in Berkeley and I'm over in Marin quite, quite often.
Okay, terrific. I think it was the slide before that, if you don't mind, Andy. So June 1, at our meeting, we're going to be asked to take action on this draft site inventory list. Is that, is that true?
As I mentioned, that, that was true until I, I just recently received information that we won't have our affirmatively furthering fair housing review of these sites. And I really want to make sure that anything I bring to council that I that we bring those things together.
Okay, so you won't, that's coming in on the 31st of May and you won't have the lead time, obviously.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
So we'll have to adjust that. But assuming June 1, we were to take action. Now this is looking like it's going to get pushed out. Hypothetically, if we were to approve the site list on June 1, does that in effect kick off the EIR from there?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. And then it's nine months in a very condensed timeline, you mentioned, for the EIR is what you're hoping to pull off.
Yes, yes.
Okay, but the nine months is more, that, that nine months exceeds the final draft on December 7. So that's why I'm, I'm trying to understand this.
I get it, yes. So our, our team has already initiated the EIR. So they're doing a lot of background things. So I, I believe that we can probably be even shorter than the nine months. And, and we do have a three-month grace period with HCD. The most important thing is, is that we get a draft in early that includes sites, our approach to AFFH and policies. And this might be a very drafty draft. But, but if we can get their, the sooner we get their feedback, the better they can know that we're serious about doing this right. And, and the better we can get feedback and, and know what more information they might want to see.
Okay, very helpful. Thank you. And I was just looking at the staff report for the next item. And I, I noticed that you have in here, sorry, getting my microphone. So up to eight council meetings is, is in the contract and is it six additional committee and commission meetings. So I presume that's the, the planning commission. Right, so that, that
Also be Affordable Housing Committee.
Okay. Okay, but the, the additional four meetings beyond this slide is just creating buffer?
Yeah.
Right, okay.
We, we want Fairfax to have a buffer. We want to make sure that everybody's able to talk through what
No, I appreciate that. It sounds like Councilmember Quiller has a question.
I just have one question and I could wait till the next item, but I think because Davis here and working on the odds are the objective development standards. Andy, you mentioned inclusionary zoning ordinance and this is something I know Councilmember Goddard and I have been interested in. I'm sure others have as well. And I don't see it in your proposal, but I'm just wondering, I know the county as part of the Objective Development Standards was working on some kind of a standard template that could be adapted. And my question is, I know it's not included in your scope right now, but Dave, is that something you've seen as part of the Opticus work or Andy, whoever is best to answer that?
Strategic Economics was hired on by Marin County and they, they were our partners with the Regional Bench for A-BAG as well. They're great, great firm. And we know that they have been working on this template and we'll be working with Gillian. We do have a little buffer in our, in our contract for any kind of staff support that might be necessary. So if it's, if, if that's where the town determines that our energy is, is needed, then we're happy to step in and, and help bring that across the finish line as well, because it will certainly be in service to the housing element update. Absolutely.
Thank you. I think that goes along with what you said earlier about, you know, us having kind of the housing element with all that we need to go forward. So I appreciate that. And just one last thought is Councilmember Goddard's question and your answer about very low, low and moderate being what's termed affordable, maybe on, when you bring the sites inventory to us. It would be good because that's the first time I've heard that explanation and I think it really helps. So thank you both. Thanks for all the hard work.
Yeah, Bruce was up next, if you don't mind. Councilmember Ackerman.
Yeah, and thank you, Councilmember Quiller. That partially covers the question that, that I wanted to bring up. And Andy, and maybe this might also be a question that, that our own staff and legal counsel can help with, but could you clarify the, what the county input to the Objective Development and Design Standards is as versus what we will or, or with your help, what, how we will modify that? And then that would, that modification would end up in our code. So that's, we're taking a template from the county and then ending up with code? Is that the process?
That is, that is the process. What Marin County did was they created a toolkit that had what they believed were all of the conditions that you would come upon within the entire county of Marin. That's a very challenging task. But you know, the, the idea is that we'll whittle that down and take things out of it that just don't, don't apply to you, that are needed. And, you know, we can talk about specifically how you want to shape them, you know, how much, how much control do you want over specific design types and styles and things which they included may not be necessary. How much do you want to streamline it? You know, a lot of towns and cities want to really cut it down. So it's very simple and easy to read and it doesn't just have a ton of unnecessary things. So that, that'll be part of the process, working with, with all of you and the, and the town to try to determine what works, what works best for Fairfax.
But we, we're able to do more than just select among the options. We're actually able to, to add our own.
We sure could.
As long as they're objective, add our own design preferences.
That is absolutely correct.
Okay, thank you.
If there are no more, oh, oh, sorry, Renee.
Yeah, thank you. I was thinking back on the SEQA, the outline of the pieces of SEQA. And when you talk about vehicle miles traveled, could you talk really briefly about what that means and how that is, what that's based on? How do you calculate vehicle miles traveled for all of these opportunity sites?
Well, we don't have our SEQA lead with us tonight, but he will be available at the scoping meeting once we have our properties list solidified.
Okay, terrific. I was, I just wasn't sure how much interfacing we'd have with them. So thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no further questions, I think we can open public comment. We approached the podium, please, because the, those on the Zoom and so forth can't hear you.
Fair enough. Madam Mayor, if I may suggest, since I'm the elephant in the room, there's a couple of facts that I would like to offer. And then I'd like to wait so my comments can try to address more people that might speak from the public.
I think given the special circumstances, I'm okay with that.
Okay. Couple of things that came up and that I will try to help. First, to Renee's question, she actually asked two questions I thought were very good. I too do not quite understand the allocation of different brackets of housing. It's just not clear to me. The question you asked, if I've been a part of these conversations, no, I have not. The one time that I was asked to come in and speak to the town was back in either October or November. At that time, Andy and Ben Berto asked me if I would accept between 350 and 450 units. Afterwards, there's been no conversation. As for the comment that Janet brought up for zoning, I believe, let's see, the current, the government code, excuse me, I didn't bring my glasses, 660B1A states that even by referendum, property cannot be downzoned from the zoning in place on January 1, 2018. So that would exempt my property in the sense that it would already be zoned. However, if we also look at case law, that, that government code speaks me could section, which is new, says that a city can no longer downzone properties, correct? The case law, which is older but applies, says that an initiative or referendum cannot do something that the city is not allowed to do. In this case, that would be downzoning of my property. So even though our initiative right now says you cannot downzone as of 2018, there is pre-existing case law that says that the town cannot currently do something that's viewed as unacceptable, illegal, however you want to cover it from prior. And if Janet would like to address those points and authority from case law, you can certainly understand. Thank you. And then I'll reserve my time for the end.
Thank you. Any other members of the public in person want to speak? Questions? Yes.
Greetings, all you friendly faces in the town council. Been a while. So I'm speaking as an individual. As you know, I'm a member of the Affordable Housing Committee in Fairfax. That's how most of you know me. First, I mean, it's abundantly evident that this, that the School Street Plaza and Town and Country Club by themselves can answer the requirements of the RENA numbers in Fairfax if we do this intelligently. First thing I want to throw out there is the Eco Village is a traditional or intentional community. Cohousing is an intentional community. Cohousing is an intentional community. Intentional communities are defined as a group of people have chosen to live together with a common purpose. The exclusivity of intentional community is the antithesis of affirmatively furthering fair housing, which is the antithesis of a private community. Social media giants build intentional communities. Do we want to encourage a giant private company to turn Town and Country Club into a private intentional community? That would be likely the revote, the the result of an Eco Village ordinance. This is indeed a hybrid working post pandemic trend. Giant companies are acquiring and paying the price for building private resort villages. So I I would like to also lob out there that I believe, and I have suggested this in the past, that this is a myth that the California Supreme Court has chimed in about the development of Town and Country, Town and Country Club being protected by referendum in perpetuity. I invite anyone to have coffee with me someday, and I'll explain it. So anyway, uh, the other thing I'd like to do is I'd like to welcome our new town manager. And this is what a welcome, and it's quite a challenge. Developing this housing element and safety element without a planning director, a job market where we are unable to recruit a permanent public works director in over six months, relying on almost entirely on outsourcing eight interstate providers being coordinated and getting it all done in only seven months. What a jam. But what better way to of fronting a tech developer half a million dollars and then an eight month head start for a private resort at Town and Country Club? My humble opinion, I think it is a bit of a hasty decision and to and I I do believe that I would just like to say the town council has been warned. This is Fairfax. We think of ourselves as homegrown, and our actions aren't showing it. I think some of this cash should be allocated for in-house or at least local staffing and oversight. So I would suggest redlining and references to warm and fuzzy marketing buzzwords like an intentional community. Thank you very much.
Can I ask that we start using our timer?
No problem.
Maybe so.
Any members of the public in person want to speak? Okay, in a few seconds, we'll move over to the Zoom. I don't not sure how many people. Take your time. Do we have any raised hands, uh, for folks on the Zoom?
We do. And first up is Mallory G., followed by Bob Pendelay. Mallory, go ahead and speak.
Go ahead, Mallory.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I have a few, uh, questions and statements, of course. Thanks, Andy, and it's nice seeing you guys together, everybody. You talked about in the beginning reasonable for the town. And I really don't think that 490 places are reasonable for the town considering fire, water and traffic. Hold on, hold on. And, um, hold on, get rid of this. And all right. Hold on one second. Okay, um, so who it has anybody contacted the government, Sacramento, to talk about Fairfax specifically? And why it is a danger to the town to have 490 new units? We paid for a lawyer. Has she contacted the state of California so we could show, uh, show Sacramento what actually is happening in Fairfax? Um, and and for even if there were tiny houses for 490 is not, I don't believe, reasonable for our town. In the, and I don't mean to David to insult anybody, but these images that you showed are not really tailored for Fairfax. They might be tailored for Berkeley, but this is not that kind of town, in my humble opinion. And the the other question, I think you've answered it a few times, is, but I didn't get it. Why can't we make all 490 if we have to do 490? Tiny houses. Why is that not a possibility? Does it, is that a law that we have to have those different, uh, amounts of of the houses? And, um, if if there's a buffer, do you really think that after we build a bunch of places that are going to be dangerous to to Fairfax if water plus fat plus traffic plus fire? Do you think anybody really will come and check and and count the number of units that we do? So that's, those are all my questions. And are you talking about McDonald's on Willow to build apartments? That's it for me.
Thank you.
Next up is Bob Pendelay, followed by Frank Egger.
You may need to unmute.
Oh.
Bob, are you available?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, actually, this is Liesel Blash, and I'm using Bob Pendole's Zoom account. And I thought he was speaking, so I was a little confused. Okay, I just have some questions tonight. You know, I felt a little left up in the air about what was happening with the housing elements. I'm really glad to, um, have this meeting tonight. The schedule was really useful because I felt like a little like up in the air about where things were going. There's sort of a schemata on the Fairfax Speaks website, but it'd be really great if there was a schedule with dates that was easily accessible for people to understand what's happening next. One of the questions I had is, uh, when did I miss it? Or when do we review policies and programs? Because I think that's really important, especially as we consider rent stabilization. One of the other things I noticed with the website is there's sort of a section for questions, but I've submitted some questions and no one's ever responded, and that might be due to some staffing issues. But it would be great to know who to submit questions to, um, so that one could actually get a response. And, um, finally, you know, I kind of like more description of the whole Eco Village concept and and what's intended by that. I guess I'll look at the staff report and see if it's in there. Um, and then finally, um, just wanted to say that I was a little disappointed that I I'm seeing now that there are maybe it looked like eight units being suggested for the two parcels behind Victory Village. Um, you know, I know we'd all hope that that would end up being open space and realize that it might not be possible just due to some funding issues there, but, um, kind of, kind of sad about that. So anyway, that's all I have to say. Just, uh, if we could have a little bit more information on the website about the schedule with the dates, if we could get some information when we're going to discuss policies and programs. Oh, yeah. And finally, I did have a question about when we were going to be considering an inclusionary zoning ordinance. I know San and Salma had a big presentation about that, uh, months and months ago, and, um, love to get a little bit more information about, uh, what Fairfax's options are. Thanks.
Pardon me. Next up is Frank Egger. Frank, you should be able to see. Frank. Mr. Egger, you can unmute yourself. Perhaps we should hold and go on to Mark Bell, who has also raised his hand. Mr. Bell.
I'm here. It took a while for that to open up. Okay. I mean, some of the obvious questions I would have is how many unoccupied or underoccupied residences are there actually in Fairfax? Because this would obviously affect, uh, the numbers that were given as far as how many units. How many undeclared in-law units are there? Has anyone done accounting of that? It would seem to me that would be the first step that one would take, especially somebody if you're paying them over a half a million dollars. Uh, if you say that, uh, if you have to overturn the zoning for the Marin Town and Country Club, regardless of the viewpoints given, uh, why is there what 100, $150, $150,000 in the proposal to check out the zoning and what's possible there? Until that gets resolved, why would you spend any money? Seems like, uh, we seem to have a lot of money for everything except for children. Also, in the nice cocooning aspect of we're going to put all these units into the Marin Town and Country Club, and they're going to have zero water impact. Does that mean that they're not going to have any piped in water? How many people are going to live like that? Uh, the other question, uh, that came up really kind of goes back to that same thing where we've paid this company a half million dollars for these consultants, and they're saying there's not enough time to figure out what's going on with White Hill. I don't know, maybe half a million dollars isn't by what it used to. Uh, I understand that you have this buffer. I feel like I'm in The Godfather, listening to Cheech. Why you have a buffer, but 588, when you're, uh, is pretty much a 25% buffer for 480. And yet also within the documents of the plan are allowances for up to 1,200 units. That's quite a buffer. If we're looking at 480 to have 1,200 units on the books. Uh, regarding your EIR, you want to do an EIR in like a matter of months? How many acres are there? You're looking at, uh, Marinda Heights, which is going to take well over a year to do an EIR, and that's a couple of hundred acres. So how many acres are you dealing with? Now you're talking about if you do have to do a referendum to try to overturn the zoning at Marin Town and Country Club, which lost 80 to 20%. Now you want to change the voting date so that it doesn't fall in a main cycle? Oh, is that to try to have less participation of who's voting? Affordable housing. Well, how come it doesn't, there is not a dollar amount as far as what the income requirements are for those houses? With interest rates going up, the income that needed to buy a house is even more. How come there aren't figures for that? And when you say that the that the builder has carte blanche to really to do whatever he wants, that means that their affordable numbers don't mean anything.
Thank you, Mark.
Next, we're going to try Frank Egger. Frank?
Good evening, Council. Frank Egger. Met away Fairfax. When the high side numbers for each side are totaled for Fairfax, it's up to 1,235 units, 745 more than the state requires in Fairfax between 2023 and 2031. A follow up to Vice Mayor Katrona's question. The the various sites, you know, include up to 1,235 units on the high side. Uh, the state density bonus laws will allow up to 50% increase in those numbers for projects built. You mentioned a ballot measure, uh, that's going to be on the next item on the consent calendar. Has a list, has it has a list of divert of the of deliverables, including, in quotes, a ballot vote to allow housing at the Town and Country Club site. So my question here is, who is preparing the the ballot language for the rezoning? Next, just a comment, you know, once a project is included in that in the 2023, 2031 housing element, if it's not built, it automatically, it is automatically approved for the next phase, 2032 to 2040, and there is no town discretion allowed, none whatsoever. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I see no more hands at this time. Actually, Amy Flynn has just raised her hand online.
Amy?
Hi, this is Amy. I I just actually wanted to thank, um, I'm a 30 year resident here, and I just wanted to thank the council so much for all of their, um, really thoughtful questions. And I think something that is always lost in these conversations is that, um, this is, this is a mandated. This isn't Fairfax choosing to have these housing, you know, this is mandated by the state. So our town and all the towns in Fairfax, in Marin, um, and the state have to make a plan for these housing. People are acting like the council members and the consultants are responsible for this, and that's not the case. We need to make a plan that works the best and that is hopefully in that also goes with the, um, the fair housing rules. And we need this, people, you know, there are people that cannot afford to live in our community, and we need to figure out how that, how that is going to work. So I'm really thankful for all of you guys because I've been sitting here listening to this, and it's not fun. And I'm, anyway, thank you for all your work, and we're really hoping that we can, that Fairfax can be the model for California. Let's, let's do this, and let's find this housing, let's like figure this thing out. Thanks.
Thank you.
There are no more hands online.
Okay.
Thank you, Council. A couple of things for actual improvements entitlements on the property to also consider. If we put all this housing on the hillsides, we will congest our roads. There will be further bond issues required for the infrastructure requirements of road improvements, water, sewage, et cetera. On my property, it's currently bifurcated with a sewer line that is instilled on a property or installed in 1922 and then has bypassed 1972. That 14 inch sewer line was designed to hold the capacity of 8,000 homes, is what I've been told by the Ross Valley Sewer District. In addition, the property has a four inch water line coming to it right now. So even if you wanted to burst that to increase it to a six inch water line, we have the infrastructure in place. That said, what is prompting me now to be a part of this conversation? My want has always been to either give this property to my prop, to my children, so it didn't have to be slapped for houses. Or my real want was to put a hotel in there, which I think is the very best thing for our community. That back in 2006, I offered a TOT of $1.6 million as well as a local hire and a traffic reduction. Because please recall, we have approximately, let's see, it's been a while, 14,500 visitors on an annual basis to West Marin. Majority goes through Fairfax. Between two and four million people, um, have a residence or zip code that exceeds 120 miles. So we could reduce traffic as well as capture those funds. What's prompting us now to accept the housing and even ask for this entitlement? With the passage of Prop 19, I no longer can keep that property. It is in effect been taken away from me. So most people understand, and you're hearing repeal the death tax, that with Prop 15, excuse me, 19, you can't give your house to your children unless it steps up to a current tax basis. There are exceptions if your child has lived in the house a while. But if you read the fine print with Prop 19, it says that the property will be reevaluated for best use. My property would qualify best use for housing. So if my wife and I die, my property tax might increase by $500,000. That will exceed my children's ability, even within the five years before it'd be in default, to try to come up with those funds. The state of California is currently one of 12 states, because I've actually written this brief material for Pacific Legal Foundation. The state of California is currently one of twelve states, because I've actually written this brief material for Pacific Legal Foundation, that if a person defaults on their taxes for as little as fifty dollars, the state of California can take that land without giving you any equity. The state of California can land bank it and/or give it to a nonprofit for public use. If the person loses all their equity, you have twelve months to petition your local board of supervisors for some of your equity. Therefore, that's a risk that I can't take. And so I will certainly embrace the housing to protect my family's interest. If the town really wanted to work for the community of Fairfax, the town would propose something right now that we can all get along and put something that could be a better use of my property than just housing. Housing could certainly be a part of it, but the property could be so much more. So I hope you'll consider that going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. So we are not taking action on this item. And I want to thank you, Andy and David, for being here. Thank you for preparing and delivering this presentation and we will see you on June first. That's still the plan. To be determined. Thank you. Have a nice evening. Oh, we still need your stat, you're sticking around for the next, okay.
Mayor, may I just make one quick comment? I just wanted to point out to the public and to ourselves that our entire Affordable Housing Committee spoke this evening. Several didn't reveal that they were, but their comments were absolutely insightful and useful. So I just think that really represents a lot that we have an Affordable Housing Committee that really cares about affordable housing and is willing to follow along. So thank you to our Affordable Housing Committee.
Yeah, I actually do. When Liesel spoke, I do think it's a good suggestion to have an updated schedule on the website if we can make that happen. And I too would like to know when the programs are going to be reviewed in that timeline. If you happen to know offhand.
That question is for me?
Probably.
So it's important that when we talk about policies, that we also have a keen understanding of need within not only the community of Fairfax, but within the region generally, particularly because this is the highest resource area. And so we know that that's something that HCD is looking for. So we will be putting together a listening session and it'll be working with community-based organizations throughout the region. And I'm mentioning this because we want to make sure that the policies that we select, that they're responsive to the understood need. We could, we could come in and talk for three whole meetings about all the wonderful, exciting policies that are, that are, that are at our fingertips and we are collecting them. We are making sure that we have a good whole stack of opportunities going forward. But what we, what we need to make sure of is that we're mindful that the the policies and programs that we're looking to, that they are responsive to the understood need. What we know is that all of the HCD revision requests.
I'm sorry, there's some conversation that's, I can't hear the speaker. Thank you.
Oh, we, we know that the revision requests coming from HCD is exactly on this point. That many of the Southern California cities, when they submitted their approved, council-approved housing element updates, they weren't able to be certified in large part because their programs and policies were not connected to an understood need. So, so we're balancing this out. We want to make sure that, that we have our clear understanding both quantitatively and qualitatively for our housing needs. So we want to make sure that when we bring the policies to you for discussion, that it's couched in, in, in that context of the understood need in ways that are user-friendly. And so I would, as far as date, I would, I would guess about a month and a half out from now is when we'll go deep in policy.
Thank you.
I think we're ready to move on to the consent calendar. Consent can be approved in one vote. We have one item on consent this evening. Does anyone, I'm, I'm going to assume that we want to talk about it so we can formally pull it or does anyone not want to pull it? Anyone, I'm going to pull it. Yeah. So item number two is to authorize the town manager to execute the First Amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with EMC Planning Group for update of the Fairfax General Plan Housing Element, Safety Element, and Land Use Element Associated Environmental Review, Completion of Objective Development and Design Standards, Zoning Updates, and Eco Village Ordinance, visualizations, and public meetings for a total not to exceed contract amount of eight hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars. Heather, are you presenting this one?
I certainly can.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So as you know, the town has been working with EMC for some time.
Heather, I'm sorry to interrupt, but you have to speak right into the mic, otherwise we can't hear you and it won't be recorded.
How's this?
That's better, but you need to stay there. Don't back off like, just because I don't want to interrupt you again.
Thank you. I appreciate it. So as you know, the town has been working with EMC for quite some time, putting together the housing element. And this is really the next step, if you will. So previously you approved contract amount of a little over four hundred thousand. And this total amount would be then a little over eight hundred thousand. The additional work is the odds, so those objective design and development, or development and design standards, that's very important to the town of Fairfax, because we want to make sure that any development that happens is done in the Fairfax way. And we know that we're up against these Rena numbers, which are provided by the state, and there are very important consequences if we're not able to provide a housing element that meets those numbers, including the loss of local control. So we definitely want to avoid that. And then we also have in there, we've heard from the council and the community that there's a strong desire to look at the idea of eco-villages and a couple of different sites are potentials for that. So we want to explore that and really give the town the ability to do that, which it does not really have right now. And then there was some additional work that was, that was needed in terms of really reaching out to some of the opportunity sites and making that connection more clearly. I don't know if you have anything to add, Janet?
I think also this is a refinement of the original scope. It's additional scope, but it's a refinement of the existing scope as well. We've gotten into it. We kind of see where we are and see how much is needed. And, and so I don't know if Andy wants to add any comments about it, but, but this is a, I think, something that would have come to you as a refinement. Additional things aside, but there are additional things in here, like finishing up the odds and assisting with some of the the other concepts like the Eco Village Ordinance concept, like the ballot measure that we're going to be working on together. But it's, it's additional time to have that back and forth and have that input from EMC.
Okay, Councilmember Kohler.
Yeah, I think one of the big pieces that's pretty important is the affirmatively furthering fair housing piece that they're expanding, adding root policy. And then I think B diversity is for further equity support. I mean, it looks to me in reviewing this and something that, and I'm, I guess I'm asking those questions, but I'm reading it in the staff report that Andy was saying earlier that their goal is to leave us with a housing element which has really the pieces that are needed for certification, correct? And then the second piece is to leave us with those tools that we need to actually implement. And I think that's further than what we contemplated, correct? Originally, when we approved this, we looked forward to the idea of just doing the housing element, the safety element, and then possibly doing an ER, which we already approved that amount of money. But now to really flesh this out. I mean, I don't know that you can speak to that, but to me in reading this, it's really a lot of fleshing out and further strengthening what we're doing. So it's not only done in the Fairfax way, but you know, it makes sure that we are affirmatively furthering fair housing and we are doing equity as said. Can you add to that, Heather, perhaps?
Yes, that's absolutely correct. And, you know, in looking back at the documents that were already approved previously for a lower amount, it was clear to me that there was a contemplation that there would need to be significant additional work. And so that's what you're seeing here today is really making sure that this process ends with what we need to do happens in the Fairfax way and that it, it feels like Fairfax throughout the process. And any development that happens will still feel like that small-town Fairfax that we all know and love.
Just one quick question. You know, Mr. Egger raised the question, and I believe I raised this earlier. I see in here that the team, which includes subconsultants, would be preparing ordinances and such and for the Echo Village concept. But I also saw in here something about one of the subconsultants preparing the ballot initiative. And I'm not sure that the councils had that discussion, whether or not we want to do that. So that's one question. I know we haven't had that discussion, but, but the other piece of it is, is I, my thoughts are that's not appropriate for a consultant to prepare a ballot initiative. That would be something that our attorney would do. So a question for Janet.
Right. And I, and we, I will have, you know, the final say over that of the language in the ballot measure. But what it's designed to do, I think it's supposed to do, and I'm sorry if it didn't convey this adequately, was that we're working together. We work very closely together. So that's the additional time and the hours, say, to review drafts or to have input into drafts and to help craft what's going to have to be very carefully crafted to to make sure that it's exactly right.
Okay. And I would just say that I would throw out there that we need to have the discussion of whether or not we would even want to proceed with the ballot initiative at a date before our consultants start working on it.
Yes, yes, oh, absolutely. And that's, you know, the, the whole concept of having an alternative that depends upon a successful outcome on an initiative measure is one that we're going to need to have a backup for, of course, if it doesn't pass. And so it's more of a, when you're looking at the EIR, it's more of a contingent approval. So if you were to select one of the options, one of the alternatives that has the town and country site in it, you would need to have a backup as well. So, you know, this is our first choice. And then if that doesn't work out, if it doesn't, ballot measure doesn't pass, this is our second choice. And potentially that will need to be another meeting as well after any ballot measure results are obtained.
Okay, one last feeding this with a stick. I want to say that the council has to have a discussion before whether or not we want to even do a ballot initiative before it's decided that we're drafting something.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
So that'll have to be a separate or one of, an agenda item at some point.
You would have to choose that as an alternative. You'd have to choose an alternative that has that in it. And then if you, as far as, you know, setting the date and calling the election or whatever, you'd have to do that as well. So there'll be multiple times that you would actually have input into it before any work is done. So, yeah, no, it's not going to, it's not something that you're not going to have any more say into. We're going to be back to you many times, probably with special meetings.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Chris.
Just coming back to my confusion still about the process on the ODDS, the Objective Development Design Standards. So the, as, as we see, there's work in this contract for that, but then do we envision Planning Commission having probably spending a good bit of time looking at this as well? And what would be, as I understand it, we'd like to have these in place by the time the housing element is certified so that we're ready for that process to, as, as Andy Flower said, to protect the town. So what would be our timeline for finishing the objective design standards and actually getting them into our code?
So you understand that there was a large sort of draft document done, a template done that can be used, can be used by any municipality in Marin County for picking and choosing the parts that fit, customizing those parts and pulling together your own odds, objective design and development standards. And so it's, we've had Planning Commission meetings and we've had, we've had a number of them. I think Andy can speak to that. I was not involved with that particular part of it, but I do imagine it will be going back to Planning Commission again. And before it comes back to you, so there'll be some recommendation, there'll be some input. But what goes back will be substantially customized and something that's really workable and usable. A much smaller, not this huge document, but something much smaller that, that's actually, I think, easier to use for everybody. And so that will be going back to the commission. I don't know. Andy, do you have anything else you want to add to that?
Not only will it be going back to the commission and David will be leading it along with Grace and, and the graphics that Grace will be bringing forward. So we'll be able to talk in depth about the sites included with this housing element update, but also the town in general, so that we'll be able to protect all sites, whether they be opportunity sites or not. And as far as timing, we have this three-month period where HCD will be reviewing our initial draft for the housing element. And at that point, we will be certain about our sites that, that we'll be including. So that will be an opportune time to really nestle in and, and get focused about the objective development design standards. The goal would definitely be to have these move through the decision-making process, hopefully even prior to the housing element adoption, if possible. David, do you want to add anything?
No, I think I agree with everything you said and it is going to be a process and there's going to be, you know, plenty of opportunity for community input throughout the process, both from the city side and the public side.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Renee.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. I mean, that, the increases rather startling. I'll be honest, if I were a member of the public and I saw this and I wasn't following and didn't really know what the odds were. I'm feeling as though it would be really useful to have maybe a highlight just brief explanation of what those pieces are that took it from the four to five hundred thousand range to the, to where we've landed now. We've heard a couple of things, but it would be helpful for, I know it would be helpful for the public and it would be helpful for me as well, as well as maybe from staff. Could you give us a little bit of insight about sort of comparative housing element consultant costs and what other cities similar to our size are paying for consultants? This is not a personal thing, Andy. You've done a fabulous job so far. But I do think that with this kind of a number increase, it would be useful to have a little bit more and maybe talk a little bit about the equity piece as well. Because from what I could read in the staff report, it was rather, I didn't really get any specifics of what that would look like when we put more focus on equity and the affirmatively furthering fair housing piece of this. So sorry, multifaceted, but I just hope for a little more transparency. So sorry, multifaceted, but I just hope for a little more transparency for the public to understand these numbers.
Yeah, I appreciate that Renee. I'm just wondering if, so page seven, there's a summary table, which I found particularly helpful. And I'm just wondering if we, we could just, you know, walk through that for the public because there are categories of costs. And then Andy can speak to the equity element.
Yeah, I think it's on page seven and eight.
Yeah, so it starts on page seven. Does that work for you Heather? Oh, great. It's on the screen. Yeah, look at that.
Thank you. So just for context, we do see, you know.
You need to speak closer, please. Sorry. And somebody needs to turn that one off because that creates some reverb.
Oh, thank you. Okay. So just for context, we do see, you know, and I, I'm new here, so I can give you sort of some background from other cities. We do see updates to the housing element. These kinds of projects are very involved and they often cost even small towns a million dollars. So I'm, I'm actually very pleased to have this coming in under that number. You will see there was some original out of scope and that, that's very important to highlight because that's really where we were kind of projecting getting, you know, I'll say a, a pretty good deal and not imagining that we would have the consultant doing certain things that they were then asked to do. And so, you know, it's only fair that the town pay people who are working for them for the, that effort. So that, that's one thing. And then the odds, that's definitely something that was completely out of scope, but could have been anticipated. So at some point, you know, your previous staff made a choice that we know we're going to have to do this, but we're not putting it in this original scope. And we think it makes a lot of sense to put it in to this new agreement or this amendment now. Because we have consultants who know Fairfax and who understand sort of what we're looking for here. And I think there's been, you know, some confusion where the county put together a template. And we've talked with the county staff about, you know, what was the intention with that template? And it was very clear that that was meant to be really expansive, everything that you could ever potentially want. Hopefully, but it was the county's intention that each of the cities and towns would then customize that. So that's not something where it's plug and play and we can just use it from there. And then you know, I think that it's really important for Fairfax to look at eco villages, to look at these other options because the, these Rena numbers are so so large compared to what we're used to as far as developments. We really want to make sure it's done in the Fairfax way. I don't know if you want to add.
I think just adding to that line, just because it's hard to see on the screen. I think originally we contemplated that we would do the rezoning ordinances and this is part of the new package that they prepare the initial parts for that. And that is actually kind of a big effort. So I just wanted to highlight that as you go through it.
Thank you.
Well, I think you should just cover the rest of it, the sequo additional costs and the 10% contingency. I mean, why not just go through it? Because it's hard to see on the screen.
Oh, apologies. Do you want to handle the sequel? So we have the SEQA reserved budget was 256, 240. That was what was already approved. And then we have additional SEQA cost on task 11 of 58,000. There's also a 10% contingency for unanticipated cost. And this is after you get the 266 for the odds rezoning and eco village ordinance. So if you can see those numbers, it's 58 for additional SEQA cost, 10% contingency, 16. And so that's how you get the total budget. From my perspective, I am not at all surprised that the SEQA numbers are coming in what they are because an E I R for an additional over 500 units is something that takes a bit of work. It's not just your regular housing element update, the way we used to have it when we had, you know, many viewer units that had to be contemplated, but this, this one is is something that is a great deal of work. And so to see an E I R figure, the total final figure on the E I R, this is not something that's shocking to me at all. It's, it's quite in line with what you see these days for E I Rs of this size, this scope, this magnitude. I was very shocked to see the original figures, quite frankly. And so this one is, is much more in line with what I'm accustomed to seeing. I know it's a lot of money, but it is an awful lot of work. There's a tremendous amount that is required to get everything into conformance and compliance with the new state requirements.
Great. So I think the second part, I know I appreciate all the, all the explanation, but the second part was about how, how the equity piece plays into this expanded contract and making sure that we've got the affirmatively furthering fair housing piece. How, how does that actually look in terms of the scope of work?
Andy, can you address that, please?
Am I, am I being clear?
Yes, yes. So a little bit of time has passed since we've met with your council. And, and we just continue to learn more and more about what's happening with the Southern California cities because they are in a cycle that was prior to ours. Very few of them have been certified so far. But all of those letters, all of those revision request letters from H C D are all publicly available. We've read through them. We've had our collaboratives read through them. A BAG has provided a guidance document that's based on reading them. So we're, we're learning a lot. And one of the things that we're learning is, is for whatever the bar has been for the Southern California cities, it's being told to us directly from H C D with their own webinars. The bar will raise with each new iterative group, regional group. So now that the A BAG communities will have a shared due date. There's even higher standards and, and this, the H C D is much better at being able to say what they're seeing that is done incorrectly than they are able to give guidance about how to do something correctly. So we have we have deduced what we feel is our best approach to make the grade, to, to get Fairfax in as, as close to the due date as possible and, and with high marks from H C D. We want to make sure that we are bringing in strong quantitative data and also qualitative data. So that then we can be confident that the sites that we're selecting are considerate of the the understood need for the community and that they, that our metrics and milestones associated with the programs and policies that we pulled together, that there's something that that they, that they are a list that the town can commit to in honoring what the needs of the community are. And we have to think regionally. So it's it's, it's a little more effort than, than if we were already an inclusive community.
So thank you, Andy. I guess, can, can I dig a teeny bit further?
Please, please.
Indulge me.
Help me answer your question.
Yeah, no, thank you. This is, it's, it's, there's a lot of pieces here, but I'm looking at the page in the, in this packet that the, from be diversity, which is the group, the subcontractor that you're working with around this diversity piece. And I'm just wondering, I'm looking at tasks and collaboration, engagement with the community. And I think what I'm trying to get to is what, because we are looking at Fairfax and
Right, right.
You know, I, I just want to know what that work really looks like because what I see is a lot of verbiage that doesn't translate to much on the ground work or action. I want to know actually what that looks like a little bit as we're looking at approving this contract. Just, it's not, it's not clear to me. And, and you guys, if I'm missing something or you disagree with my line of questioning, please let me know.
Well, I guess what I'm hearing you ask is like, so it says be, be diversity will work to make sure the process of assessing community needs, engaging with the community, educating the community and making recommendations for next steps are all grounded in the practice of D E I. So you really want to know what that looks like.
Yeah, what does that mean in the town of Fairfax? Because it all sounds good and it's, and it's vital there, you know, in principle, but I just don't know what that looks like in Fairfax and how it will be, how it will be done. What will this contractor do?
Sure. Well, I can speak to the work that this contractor is doing with us and, and other communities. So they, they lead the outreach arm. So they establish relationships with organizations, community-based organizations, groups. Particularly those who are the focus for A F F H for protected classes. And I'm trying to not leap to then how will this look in, in our housing element, but I, that's where I want to go to. So can I, can I leap there and then we'll work backwards a little bit?
Absolutely. I know, you know, this is a question that you may not have been prepared for, but I, I didn't, after reading, I wasn't very clear.
Sure. And it's, it's exciting stuff if you're an inclusive minded individual. And I know that there's a lot of folks there in Fairfax who are. So I really value the partnership that we've had along the way. So the way to look in the housing element as, as we incorporate the valuable information and insights through the processes that they lead is when we, when we have our potentially a matrix or index of policies and programs, that we're able to cite directly how we've heard from the community that these programs and policies will directly benefit protected classes. And those who have otherwise maybe been disenfranchised from housing opportunities. So the more and, and stronger connections that we can make within our document for those programs and policies that we select. That's exactly what H C D is looking for. So they need to know that we've taken these measures, that we, that we've taken the time and energy to, to make these connections. And, and that's that's what Lee Robinson is able to help us with.
Okay, thank you. I had one last thing I wanted to, to ask, and it's along the same lines as Councilmember Kohler was talking about, that we haven't had the conversation, obviously about the ballot measure. And I don't really feel like we've had the conversation about the eco village. I know I've heard it come and go and sort of be woven into some affordable housing committee meetings over time. But I don't feel as though I'm ready to, you know, say, let's go forward and, you know, have you consult on how to put together an ordinance about eco villages.
And I don't remember Mr. Hammer saying.
Giving guidance on the ordinance per se, but I do remember giving staff direction that we were interested in the eco village. I do remember that.
Okay. I mean, and so is that, that's already incorporated in their work plan? Just because we did hear something tonight and I don't feel as though I'm, I'm educated enough about what it is to really say, yes, let's just put this in because we once said to staff that we should.
We'll be, we'll be coming back to you for all of these different pieces and parts. So what we were trying to do was scope out or map out everything that might be needed. And some of this stuff you may not, you may not want. And so you'll have a chance to look at it and you'll decide whether you want to include it or not. But this is a, you know, a not to exceed. And so it includes, it includes everything that we could put in there. It doesn't have to be that much. They don't have to do this particular piece or that particular piece if we don't want it. But this is an all-inclusive number with a not to exceed amount in the hopes that this is the, this is the program so that you can see everything. And there won't be any more surprises, hopefully. I can't guarantee that, obviously. But, because there could always be cost overruns or whatever, but you see, there's also a contingency in here now. And so.
So if we want inclusionary or we, we want that to be considered and that's not in here.
That would be additional.
That would be additional.
Well, Andy said there was enough room in the budget, if buffer in the budget. So I think, Andy, and I'm not putting words in your mouth because I swear I heard that.
No, we heard you say that.
And so I would just say that we want that to be listed in there because that's something we've been talking about for a long time. And the county keeps saying, wait, wait, we're doing this template. And they're changing what was a template in the past. So Andy said it was in the buffer. So let's make sure we have it as a line item.
Andy's got his hand.
Andy's raising his hand.
Yeah, I would just like to point out that we do have task eight, which is staff support. And so that was, that was sort of the bucket that I was imagining that there's this, and I'll tell you this also, we've just recently heard back from H C D that there needs to be a little bit of work on the annual progress report. We're happy to be in support of that. We want H C D to look favorably upon Fairfax as, as completing the tasks that they're requesting. So these two items, inclusionary zoning, bringing that through while we're already meeting with the planning commission and council. That's something we can tuck in. And I believe between what we have here and staff support and what we have available as part of our contingency. These are two very good examples of what I could see falling under these and likely not exceeding this number. Now, if we end up having something else that's a surprise, that's a cost overrun, we might be back. But otherwise, as as was mentioned, this is a not to exceed budget and for items that you wouldn't want us to work on. That would be cost savings to you. One, another item too, that I want to bring up is that there, there are some REIT funds available, particularly for the outreach. So so our outreach efforts will, will likely be to some extent compensated by the, the REIT dollars. So we're working closely with Marin County and making sure that you're in line for that.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, I think we're ready to open public comment. We'll take in person first. And I need, I, before, before you speak, I, I just can't see the timer. I can do it here on my phone, but I prefer not. Great.
Except the speaker needs to see it too.
Can you see it?
Yeah.
It's fine. Can't see it. Okay, I'm just, you know what? I'm just going to use my device. Go ahead. Thank you.
Pamela Mix, 310 Cypress Drive, Fairfax. I have a couple of questions. This contract. Was there any bidding or, you know, using, or did you just decide to do this budget? And was there any competitive, like an R F P? Was there anything to create some kind of competitive bidding to keep the cost down? It's a small town and these big items out of a small town's budget can be really difficult. That's, you want to answer that and then I have a second.
There was originally, with the original selection.
I don't understand that. What do you mean originally?
This is an amendment to an existing contract. So the original selection did have that competition.
But not, not the, the current one, not the addition?
Well, no, when you have an existing contract and then you do an amendment to it, you've already selected the group you're working with. And that's what we've selected E M C.
Okay.
And so this is an amendment to their existing contract.
Okay. The other question is attorney fees. Wait, let me finish. So what I want to know is within that $800,000, how much is attorney fees for you or other attorneys? Or is there a supplement budget outside of the, the scope of the 800,000 that we didn't, we don't know about? And it's like, go ahead.
No, there are no attorney's fees in this. This is for E M C only, solely. So we have a contract with the town and so that's where my fees, that's where the fees for my firm are for the town attorney. are for the town attorney fees, working with EMC. But this is solely EMC. There's no attorney budget in this contract.
Do you have an estimate on your attorney fees?
I need to interject that this is not a dialogue. This is a one-way forum. I, I know you're familiar with this, Pam.
No, I just want to find out how much more money is it going to cost the citizens of Fairfax for fees for this whole thing to do with the housing?
That's not something I could give you an estimate on tonight.
Thank you.
Hello again, council, council. If there is housing on my property, I really hope that the council will look at doing a BID so we can keep that incremental tax difference. Because if there's any sort of affordable housing element that we take utter state funds, we're excluded from giving that to our own community. And we have many people in our own community, as well as some of my tenants, that would benefit from that housing. And I'd like to offer it first to our community that's paid taxes in the past and are here. This is their home and I'd like to keep them here. To the budget that was presented earlier, I think expending $266,000 on the Eco Village concept is a lot of money, especially if you don't know if it's allowed because it's exclusionary. So I'd really review that or possibly carve it out. The gentleman that spoke first from the affordable community, he was correct. So my property by zoning did not go to Supreme Court. I believe that it was not allowed to be heard because the doctrine of latches. I haven't really thought about this for a long time, this journey for some sort of compensation. And this would have been asked for injunct relief to put it back to what the voters had asked for. But so the real statement was the reason it's barred from the Supreme Court. Supreme Court has to be the court of last resolve. And the fact that you can go back to the voters even before this change that now we don't have to, it, it precluded the opportunity to go to court because you could always go to the voters and hear it again and again and again. One other comment that I forgot to say for the entitlements, the town site says that a portion of the property is below the 500-year plane. That's correct. But that portion is probably 500 square feet. It's the two ramps that go down to the creek. So outside of the actual creek bed itself, which is owned by the Town Country Club, I also own the two parcels at the end of Pacheco and at the end of Pastore. Pacheco's last building lot. So the property, if you look at your Lidor, is at the 500-year floodplain. Thank you.
Thank you. Are any members of the public on Zoom with their hands raised? Now's the time. Madam Mayor, I see no hands. Are there still folks in attendance on Zoom? Okay. Okay. Pardon me, there are.
Sometimes it takes a minute.
Yeah. Excuse me. Frank Egger is up. Go ahead, Frank.
Thank you. Frank Egger again, middle way here in Fairfax. I, I've read the 41 pages of staff reports, seven in the initial staff report and 34 additional pages. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. I, I read the 41 pages of staff reports. And in this one section, it talks about $159,000 for consultants. And the consultants are, who, who are those folks? The consultants are more sky, less ceiling. And it includes preparation for plans for an Eco Village. And, and also a ballot measure. The exact, what's the exact wording again? The exact wording in the staff report was other deliverables, the ballot vote to allow housing at Town and Country Site. So I'm wondering if, if in fact there's going to be a ballot measure. There are currently 40 units at the Town and Country Site. And will those 40 units be replaced or will they be kept on the site? Will the additional units be over and above the 40? Or, or, you know, it's really not clear. Maybe, maybe the, the rezoning effort will show exactly what's going to happen there. But it's really not clear in, in, in the staff report exactly what's going to take place at the Marin Town and Country Club. But will that be the, will that be the Eco Village study? And, and the ballot measure to rezone? Will that encompass the existing 40 units and what happens to them? That's, thank you.
Thank you. Any other hands raised?
Next up is Mallory G.
Hi. I was just wondering if anybody can answer the question I asked before. And I have a, an additional one. Has anyone of our legal team contacted the government to talk about Fairfax specifically? And why this is not reasonable and why it is a danger to the town to add all these extra buildings and even supplementary extra buildings, which I just found out about tonight. And I will announce that I am on the Affordable Housing Committee, but I'm speaking for myself. So can that be answered? Anybody? Legal team? Can you hear me?
Um, Mallory, it's Renee. And I will tell you that our planning director and the town appealed the Rena numbers originally. And we were turned down along with most other jurisdictions that did file appeals, including everyone in Marin County. So yes, that number was appealed. Now, I, I, we're not going to go back and forth, but I want to.
Yeah, I really don't want to set a precedence for engaging in dialogue.
Okay, and.
You can write to the council of questions.
The other question is, I'm a little confused about the, the site behind Victory Village. Wasn't that supposed to be kept for Fairfax by itself without any building on it? Can anybody answer that? Will anybody answer that?
Please just shoot us an email to the council and to staff and we'll, we'll respond to you via email. We're not supposed to be like doing the back and forth.
Okay. Any further? I see no more hands at this time.
Thank you.
Mayor, could I, could I ask one more question that came up? I'm just, I just got to ask if, based on the prior questions and some questions from the public, if we haven't had a conversation about the ballot initiative? And if we haven't had a formal working through of the Eco Village concept? What's the difference between approving the funding at that time versus giving the green light just to have that as part of the contract at this time? I under, I understand that it's just in there and it's part of a not to exceed. But I'm just curious about that because it feels like, yeah, there's like, there are still questions about those two items. Thanks.
Right. And so some of that time, I would imagine, and Andy, please feel free to jump in if it's, if it's, if I'm not answering this question completely. But I would imagine some of that time is to prepare some materials to come to you, to present to you, to, to explain to you what, what this is, what that is, and what we're looking at here or there or the other. So we would have to do some minimal amount of presentation materials to show you what the Eco Village concept is. We would have to do some minimal amount of work to show you what a ballot measure might look like. So that you could make an informed decision on it. That's one of the reasons. And the other reason is, as I mentioned before, we were trying to give an inclusive picture. Everything that could come up that we anticipate coming to you and asking you about. So that you wouldn't be bombarded basically with other amendments. We were hoping to get it all sort of in one big amendment so we wouldn't be bringing other amendments to you piecemeal.
So I guess another way of saying it is that the cost represented in the contract, it does, should not reflect a commitment necessarily to Eco Village, et cetera. Right. Yeah. And I think that's, I appreciate you raising that. And I think that's what we've been trying to clarify for the public. Go ahead.
I think it's time for a little deliberation, although I would be ready to make a motion, is that I think one of the questions in the staff report was about having the contractors, Andy in particular, and others in EMC appear virtually. And I will say that I think it's very effective. You know, particularly when we're seeing their big faces on the screen. And I think we're being more conservative, lowering our vehicle miles traveled. I think we should reserve the right potentially to have a meeting in person, maybe when, if needed. But I do think it's very effective virtually. And I think it saves time for our consultants and they can be working more for us rather than driving on the road how many hours. But I do like the idea of virtual and I think seeing it tonight sort of exemplified to me that it works. Thank you.
It also represents quite a cost savings. So given that it worked so well, I say we go for it.
I agree.
I concur. And back to the, to the point that Councilmember or Vice Mayor Cotrona brought up about the, our approving disagreement, even though some parts of it, we may decide pending discussion that we don't want to go fully forward with, we'll see. I, I see that as a budgeting. It's basically a budgeting process. We were tomorrow going to be discussing our overall budget for the town. And we need to, we don't want to have a large chunk that we said, well, we're not going to think about that right now because that's what budgeting is all about, is to think about the whole thing and have a place for it all so that we know what we can and can't do. So, so I think this makes sense. This process makes sense. And I'm, and I certainly concur with the virtual and the savings, both of vehicle miles traveled and of costs. So.
I'm ready to make a motion.
May I make one comment brief? I just want to recognize and offer my thanks to both Andy, EMC, and to Janet for stepping up. Because as everyone knows, we haven't had a planning director to do this work. That is a huge part of it. And Janet, you have really gone above and beyond and brought us to this point. And we're, we're getting there. So Andy, with real appreciation for hanging in there and for keeping us moving forward.
I was going to say the same thing. Thank you for mentioning that. Both have really stepped up in the absence of the Director of Planning. And we see that and we appreciate it.
And I'm ready to make a motion. Because I've always got my finger on that button. But I do want to say one thing, you know, I followed some other jurisdictions in Marin. And I want to say with Andy's help, EMC and others, and Janet in particular, I've always been worried that we're really not that, you know, that we're behind. And compared to other jurisdictions, we're actually doing really well. I've seen some jurisdictions recently that are just awarding contracts to consultants or some that did like a month ago. And so I think you guys have done an amazing job. So with that, I would like to make the recommendation to authorize the town manager to execute the First Amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with EMC Planning Group, EMC, for update of the Fairfax General Plan Housing Element, Safety Element, and Land Use Element, Associated Environmental Review, Completion of Objective Development and Design Standards, ODS, Zoning Updates, and Echo Village Ordinance Visualizations and Public Meetings for a total not to exceed contract amount of 844,774. And I just want to add to that, that's the total amount of the contract from the very beginning.
Right. And I will second that motion.
I heard motion, Kohler, and second Ackerman.
And it's, it's clear, I guess, that the council's preference is to favor the virtual, virtual meeting format wherever possible.
Accept that friendly amendment.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any nays? Okay. Passes unanimously. I would like the minutes to reflect the discussion around the inclusionary being tucked in. Thank you.
And Mayor, I'm not sure, before we adjourn, I'd just like to mention that some of us may know about the sad death of Marie Sigenthaler. And her mother is Connie Sigenthaler, lives in Fairfax. And today in the paper, it was reported that the person who hit and ran and killed Marie or caused her death was convicted of criminal action. So our hearts go up.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And with that, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.